We'll be opening the City of Beaumont City Council meeting on January 2, 2018. If anybody -- Bob, if you have trouble hearing me on the recording, would you let me know? My voice is a little light tonight. The closed session will be opening at 5:00 PM. Call to order, please.
Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here. The closed session tonight will be covering public comments first, if there are public comments tonight.
No public comments.
Then we will move on to conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 94656.9 D1909, Houses LLC versus the City of Beaumont, Atal, Case Number RIC 1717411. And Item Number Three, Conference with Labor Negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, City Designated Representative, City Manager Todd Parton, or his designate, and that is for Beaumont Managers, Police Managers, Police Officers Association, Police Sergeants, Professional and Technical, Police Safety Support Services, General Unit of SEIU Local 721, Customer Service Coordinators SEIU Local 721. With that, I'll adjourn to closed session at 5:05. Call to order for the Beaumont City Council meeting. We're coming in from closed session to the regular session at 6 o'clock. I'm sorry, 6:02. And do we have a report out from closed session?
Okay, there were...
Can you hear me? So there were two items on the closed session agenda. One was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54656.9 D1909, Houses LLC versus City of Beaumont, Case Number RIC 1717411. No reportable action. And then Item Number Three is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, City Designated Representative, City Manager Todd Parton, or his designate, Beaumont Managers, Police Managers, Police Officers Association, Police Sergeants, Professional and Technical, Police Safety Support Services, General Unit SEIU Local 721, Customer Service Coordinators SEIU Local 721. And there was no reportable action on that item. That's the end of the closed session.
Thank you. Could we have a call to order, please?
Yes. Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here. We have no absences today. Could we do the pledge of allegiance? Our city manager?
I pledge my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda in council? Any adjustments? Any conflict of interest or disclosure? Anyone needs to share? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to move to the announcements. Item one, we have introduction of the Assistant City Manager Christine Day. As mayor, I'd like to welcome you. I'm sure council would, so I'd like to turn this over to our city manager.
It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Christine Day, our new Assistant City Manager. Christine comes to us from Medlothian, Texas, spent about the last year there as Assistant City Manager. Christine and I got to work together for about almost eight years in Kerrville, and so she was there when I got there as our Parks Director. It didn't take long to identify the talent that was there, and ultimately she became Deputy City Manager for me in Kerrville. When I got here and I looked at the types of issues and needs that this community had, we developed a pretty aggressive description for the type of person and the talents that we were looking for. We conducted a nationwide search. Ms. Day did submit her application, and through that process, which included an executive committee review outside of me, to review those, conduct interviews, and provide recommendations on the hire, Ms. Day came through that with flying colors, and she was very strongly recommended for joining the Beaumont team. So what she brings to us is a quarter century of public service. But the successes that have been achieved by Ms. Day include hundreds of millions of dollars in capital projects, has overseen rewrites to comprehensive plans, has overseen planning, engineering, major public works operations. The types of capital projects we're talking about are not small park projects, although those are numerous, but water towers, reuse water projects, major lift stations, regionalized lift stations that handle millions of gallons of wastewater daily. So Ms. Day brings to us an amazing wealth of accomplishments and experience that are going to really see us as we now build our platform to move into the future. So please join me in welcoming Ms. Christine Day.
Thank you for the opportunity. My family and I are very excited to be here. Try to get them all here, get all moved in, but we're very excited and excited to do some of the work that we talked about this morning in the staff meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. I'm going to open public comment. Public comment period items, not on the agenda. Any one person may address the city council on any matter, not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do.
Okay. I will open the public comments section at 6:09.
Happy New Year to everybody. And of course, I have this crud, so this is not my normal voice. So welcome. So when you hear me talk, otherwise, you'll know this is not actually Anita, but welcome. And thank you, Todd, for that wonderful introduction. Happy New Year to everyone and the new council. Of course, I'm here to talk about our past area Veterans Expo that's coming up. This is our ninth year. We are really excited because we have a lot of information going out for public resource. And of cour...
Excuse me.
Of course, on our flyer, we cannot say everything, which is the past area veterans, military, family, and friends, and this is open to the public. We've had a lot of people that are coming in wanting to be a part of this. We want to make sure that we help everyone that knows anyone that's been in the service or any family, any friend, because a lot of people make bonds that cannot actually be severed through service. So please, this is on the... Sorry. This is on Saturday, the 27th of January, at 10:00 AM in the morning, right here. And in this room, we'll have the VA loan lender that will actually set up for eligibility. So anyone that would have their DD 214s or questions, they'll be here. A lot is in here, and I left some cards at everyone's table. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Kimball.
I just want to make sure you can hear me, because I can yell, but I'm not going to tonight. Okay. Can you hear me? I'm going to read, so I know I have three minutes, okay? But my name is Linda Kimball. I live at 1420 Yarrow Lane. Good evening, city council and the new employee. What I'm addressing tonight is something that happened at the last city council meeting that I watched on YouTube. I saw you, council mayor, was mayor, White, rudely cut off Judy Bingham. I don't know her personally, but that was uncalled for. While she was speaking about something very important regarding, again, the 43 million that was stolen. These monies were paid by the citizens of Beaumont, and we are always being asked to pay for this one idea or another that has already been paid for. Instead of disagreeing with Judy Bingham, we should all say thank you because she saw what was going on. I read the financials from years ago. I don't know her, but my God, was she spot on, spot on the whole thing. So the citizens of Beaumont, I mean everyone, we all live in this city. We should be supporting each other, not disagreeing. I've seen her comments, okay, but I want to say thank you, but she's not here, because I don't see her. I feel you owe her an apology for how rude you were, because a lot of people saw it on YouTube, and they could... We commented within the city, like, you can't do that. So you can cut me off if you want, but I will do the same thing. I will keep talking. Lastly, this sewer increase, I'm going to vote no, because guess what? I found that it was paid for in 1993. My daughter's 24. That's 24 years ago, and now you're asking for us to pay again, plus the citizens that have already paid for it? No. So if you want to work with the citizens, you need to stop and listen to what we're saying. We're always asking for more. You're always asking for more monies that have already been paid. City manager and city council, stop looking at the citizens of Beaumont for more money. Why don't you get like some more stores by those vacant lots, by Kohl's, Walmart? Let the businesses pay more money. Stop asking us. We've paid enough. You've got Melrose. That's a hefty amount of money that was taken, and I do know that. Remember, this year, 2018, it is time for the citizens to vote. Eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any more public comments?
No other comments.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll close the public comments at 6:15.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I address briefly?
Sure.
Ms. Kimball, I understand your concern, and I believe that I was holding the concept that this is a business meeting, that we needed to conduct our business efficiently. What I have done is, because of the response, I've put up an entire written response to why I did what I did and why I felt it was necessary to do what I did. I think anyone here can tell you that I... If you go to ourfocusourkids.com, that's where I put up my statement. And if you'll go there, there's also about 550, 600 articles that I've written over the last eight years. And I was right alongside Ms. Bingham up there, and I was doing and claiming and arguing all of the same points she was. But that night, she had told me that she was going to go on as long as she wanted to go on, and I respectfully asked her to wrap it up, and I asked her again to wrap it up. And finally, I believe that the most polite way I could do it was to just adjourn the meeting, as opposed to, I couldn't find any other option. We needed to conduct our business efficiently. As I said, you can read my written response on my website. Thank you.
I will add one thing to that, and that is, one of the overriding rules that I did some research on public comments after that meeting, and one of the things that was an overriding principle is that public comment is supposed to be as fair as possible to the public, and that's the purpose. You make sure that they have an opportunity to express freely whatever it is that they want to say, and that there's deep respect for that, and I think that we've always done that. But you can't, according to what I was reading, also you can't decide to apply different rules to different people, because what you give to one, when you don't give the same to everyone else, it is no longer the same fair, free speech platform that it was designed to be, and that you can't make capricious decisions to give it to one and to not let the other one extend. And when there are comments such as, "I will be going as long as I want," that is taking away the principle of that free speech platform in which it's equal for everyone to be able to say whatever it is, their opinion, fully. That is not what anybody is trying to restrict. What they're trying to do is to just make sure that it's as balanced as possible. And that was one of the things that impressed me when I read about what a lot of judicial opinions were and why things were put in place in a certain way. So, thank you. I'd like to move on to the consent agenda. If nobody else has any comments. All right. Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything, any item on the consent agenda for discussion or for question and would like to have it pulled?
I would like to pull four and five, please.
I'm sorry, four and five?
Yes.
Okay.
Four also from you.
Okay.
I have a comment on the four and five also.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I start on this? Okay. My concern on the four and five is the insurance coverage on that. And if we could, you know, do... Probably the city should be added as additional insured on that event.
Okay.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Councilmember Santos, so what I'd like to do is go ahead and approve the other items, and then we'll discuss four, and then we'll discuss five.
Okay.
Is that all right?
They'll be fine.
Okay. So Items Two, Three, and Six. I'd like to go ahead and get a motion for approval. So, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
On the consent agenda?
We don't.
I'll move to approve Items Two, Three, and Six on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Okay. I would like to discuss Item Number Four now. Approval of Walter Brothers Circus.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood.
Thank you. What you have before you tonight? We can talk about them individually, or you want to talk about them together?
Let's talk about them individually, if we could.
Well, number one, on the Number Four, the new insurance comes out, we'll have the City Beaumont on there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a common policy. We just missed it on that, but it'll always be on our insurance riders, the name of City of Beaumont, just insured.
Good.
Any other questions on Four?
Just to bring this up, because it came up the last time we had circus in town, so I thought we'd address it before, get all the fake news out there. And it's in general to both circuses, Four and Five, as to why we are charging a fee as opposed to a portion of the gate.
Again, in the past, we've done the fee for the park usage. That's really the only expense that we're out. We had talked about it before, and we're really not out here to make money on these two events. I think it's just to bring the events to the community. We did deal with Walter Brothers last year, and they're a fantastic organization, zero problems on my side or the police side. Paid all their fees, we had their deposit, gave the deposit back, and then with that money, we were able to reseed that park and get it ready for the Cherry Festival. And that's really what those funds were used for. There's really no out-of-pocket expenses on either one of these.
And I think, Mr. Pardon, when it came up before, we also learned that we don't have ordinances in place that'll allow us to charge a portion of the gate fee.
That's right.
Okay. That was my only question on Number Four, and I'll wait for Number Five.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions at Four?
I do. It just, it goes along with Mr. White. Basically, I just wanted to make sure that those fees were covering the grounds.
They do.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, again, we're able to put the money back into that facility, and it does really, this actually has been like a blessing for us.
Okay, and those...
Refer lives and areas.
The fees are adequate enough as far as what we're charging?
Definitely.
Okay.
That's all.
In that regard, do we have extra police patrols, and if so, do the fees help assist in covering that?
No.
No? No, we don't have extra patrols, or no, the fees don't cover that?
Neither.
Neither? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, your deposit, I would... They would probably cover that if we had to have an issue with the police. I needed them down there.
I'll move to approve Item Number Four.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item Five, Approval of Cirque Legacy Circus. Questions on Item Five?
Just, I think it's an oversight, but on the permit application, under the Event Description section, it says, is there an attendance fee per person, how much, and that's all been left blank. I know the other one was $15, but I didn't see one on this one.
I didn't have the attendance estimate either, I noticed.
We can address that with that vendor.
Okay. I would imagine it's going to be similar to the first...
I would say it's similar. I honestly, I've... We've checked a little bit about them. They're a little smaller operation, so, again, and they're coming in in February, so it should be a good timing. Both events are fully aware that they're putting those circuses up in a flood basin, so if rain does hit, there's no circus, so...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll entertain a motion. No more questions.
I move to approve Item Number Five.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Item Seven, Mayor Appointments to Various Boards, Committees, and Committees. Apologize for my voice tonight. Do you want me to go ahead and read that, or do you want to...
I can go ahead.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So this is an annual thing that's done, where the mayor is to appoint representatives to the boards and committees that council is a part of, and council has submitted their interests, and I put them together for you, so you can kind of see where everybody has their interests, and then you can appoint from there. There is one additional appointment that's needed for the Oversight Board, but I can do that at the very end.
Okay.
To give you more explanation on it.
All right. Thank you. The first thing I want to say about these commissions and positions, there's an incredible amount of volunteer time that is contributed by the city council members when they attend these meetings. They often have to make great sacrifice from their days with their work schedule. It's not always at the most convenient time to schedule with work. It's not some... You have to be prepared for the meetings. You have to do a lot of reading and making sure that you make the most of the meeting for the city. So before I do any appointments, I want to thank you all for the work that you've done to go ahead and represent the city in all these meetings in the past year, and I'll try to match up what I hope is best for the city here with what our current resources are. Riverside Transit Agency, I'd like to appoint Councilmember White as representative to that, and Councilmember Lara as the alternate. Are you all right with that?
That's fine.
Riverside County Transportation Committee, I would like to appoint myself as the representative on that, and with Councilmember White as the alternate on that.
Because you just went to here.
I went from here to here. Did I do that wrong?
Okay. Transportation, no?
I skipped that.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Just a confusion.
It worked.
Okay? Good. All right. Western Regional Council Conservation Authority, Julio Martinez. He's done a great job with that. I'd like to continue with you, if that works. And Councilmember Lara, would you continue as alternate on that?
Sure.
Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks and Recreation District, I would like to have Mike Lara continue as the first person on that, and Julio as the alternate. Beaumont Cherry Valley Water District, Councilmember White as the primary, and myself as the Beaumont Unified School District, Julio Martinez as the primary, and Ray Santos as the alternate. The Collaborative Agency, I didn't have any past representatives in this, so I don't know who's served.
I've been serving on that. It's sort of a mayor position, because it's all the different agencies getting together once a month.
I put myself as representative and Councilmember Santos as alternate on that. The Mayor's Breakfast, we'll skip to the Eastern, the Erika, Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communications Authority. Councilmember White has been doing a great job with that. I'd like to continue with that, if that's agreeable to you.
That might be in conflict with RTA?
Oh, timewise.
It's on Thursdays at 2:00? It's every other... Every other month, sometimes once a quarter?
Yeah. All right. I will put myself in for that.
For Erika?
Yeah, for Erika. Do we have... Does anyone else have interest in doing Erika? Because I didn't get another name on it, and I don't really want to not spread the love around.
And it is in Cathedral City.
All right. I'll leave myself there. We can make sure it works out later. The Southern California Association of Governments, Julio Martinez. The League of Cities, Julio Martinez, and Councilmember White as the alternate. Would that be all right with you?
Sure.
Okay.
And which one, League of Cities?
League of Cities.
Mayor, did you have an alternate for SCAG?
Pardon me?
For Southern California Association. Did you have an alternate, Jason?
You have Councilmember Santos? For some of these, you did not volunteer, so if there's any problem-
There'll be no problem.
Please speak up now.
No, you'll be fine.
Okay. The Memorial Committee, Mike Laura and Julio Martinez as committee members. You've been serving together, so you could be the primary, and Julio could be the alternate.
That's fine.
Okay. Finance and Audit Committee, Councilmember Santos, I'd like you to continue with that, if you would please.
Sure. Thank you.
And I will stay on that committee. The Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Mike Laura. Is, am I giving you too much, Mike?
No, it's fine. Thank you for asking.
Okay. And Councilmember Martinez. San Gorgonio Integrated Water Management Region Stakeholder Advisor Committee, I hope I don't have to say that twice. We have Julio as the primary member, and I will put myself as an alternate or secondary member. For the Western Riverside Council of Governments, I am the primary, and Councilmember White is the secondary. Now, the only one I've left is T-NOW. I left T-NOW last because it's the middle of the day on Thursday, and it might be a time problem for you, Councilmember White. What do you think?
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay. So this is what I would suggest doing. I'll be happy to continue with that, if you would like. And that's kind of what we did one year. We broke that one out because I was the only one who could make the middle of the day. It just means that I sit in for you, so do you-
Oh, I didn't realize that was part of RTA. I hadn't asked for RTA, so I wasn't aware that that was part of RTA.
You could sit in on it. I mean, you could be just appointed to it, and so I'd like to appoint you as the primary, and then I'll be your alternate. And then when you can't make it, I'll just show up, if that work?
I'd rather not be on that, that selection.
You don't want to be on-
Not on the, not on the T-NOW. Not on the T-NOW at Thursday.
Fine. All right, I am going to-
Would you like me to assist you with that, Mayor?
Yeah, would you?
Sure.
Okay. So do you want to be the person that shows up?
For the primary?
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Be the, my backup?
Yes. All right. And the last one that was not on the list is the ROPS Oversight?
Yes.
And I would like to appoint Melana Taylor to that as staff. Are we good? We've covered it all. I thank you very much, all of you, for your, and if there are any hiccups that we get as part of that, you'll just work through them. Thank you. Item eight, ordinance transfer inspection authority to Housing and Community Development, HCD, for mobile home parks. Recommended council actions and staff report first. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. At the December 5th meeting, council directed staff to return with the proposed ordinance to transfer inspection authority back to Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for the mobile home parks. This inspection authority is normally performed by HCD, and it has been common in recent years for local jurisdictions to return these duties to HCD. As mentioned in the staff report, the cost to our city to provide this service has been subsidized out of our general fund. Due to the restrictive fee structure established by the state in Title 25, we were unable to correct this deficiency with our recent fee study. The cost to perform these duties costs the City of Beaumont roughly forty-three thousand a year. Staff recommends city council approve this ordinance to transfer the inspection authority for mobile home parks back to Housing and Community Development, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Thank you. Do we have public comments on this?
No.
Great, thank you.
I move to approve item number eight.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine, first reading of an ordinance adding chapter sixteen point sixty-eight, titled Dedication of Land for Park and Recreational Purposes and Payment of In-Lu Fees to Title sixteen subdivisions of the Beaumont Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Apologize for the, the long title of that chapter, but that's just what it needs to be called. So, as you remember, in November of 2017, council approved the Development Impact Fee Program Ordinance and the Nexus Study. That program also talks about in-lu fees for park space that would not be constructed by a developer, but in fact paid into a pot, and then the city goes out and acquires and constructs land. So the state of California has an act, or has had an act approved, now it's part of the government, gets a code section. It's called the Quimby Act. And this ordinance is written to follow that Quimby Act, and if you remember at that meeting, the Building Industry Association said, well, how does this impact fee study and this ordinance work in conjunction with your Quimby ordinance? So, so staff went back through the books, and we found out we didn't actually have a Quimby ordinance. We were following the law, but we didn't have an ordinance that, that backed everything up that we were doing as staff. So what we did was, we worked with the city attorney's office, and we drafted a Quimby ordinance, and that's what's before you tonight. So it's, it's very cut and dry. It just establishes procedures for requiring the dedication of land and the payment of in-lu fees thereof, or a combination of both, to serve new subdivisions in accordance with the requirements of the city's general plan, and applicable abortions of the Beaumont Development Impact Fee Study dated November sixteenth of 2017, and the requirements of the state of California in the Quimby Act. And I can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public comment on this?
There are no public comments.
Questions from council?
Do you have to open and close a public hearing?
Yes.
As long as we say there aren't, yeah, open and close it.
Did we do that on the one before?
We didn't.
I'm sorry, open and close the public hearing now? Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing at six forty. Close it. Close the hub, the public hearing at six forty-one. Do we have to read the ordinance aloud?
No, my recommendation is to waive the first reading and approve the, by a substitution of title only, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Beaumont adding chapter sixteen point six eight, titled Dedication of Land for Park and Recreational Purposes and Payment of In-Lu Fees to Title sixteen subdivisions of the Beaumont Municipal Code.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to agree to the waiving of the reading and to approve this and move it to the next meeting? It has to be moved to another reading, correct?
Yes, correct.
I move to waive the full first reading and approve by substitution of title only an ordinance of the city of, council of the City of Beaumont adding chapter one six point six eight, titled Dedication of Land for Park and Recreational Purposes and Payment of In-Lu Fees to Title sixteen subdivisions of the Beaumont Municipal.
Thank you. And this will come forward at the next meeting?
Yes, the second meeting.
On the sixteenth?
I'll second that, too.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. Item ten, partial termination of Loma Linda Development Agreement for the property APM four one nine dash two six zero dash zero seven five.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this item has an interesting backstory, but it's pretty much a cleanup item as we sit here today. So the City of Beaumont and Loma Linda University entered into a development agreement back in the early nineties relating to large acreage that the Loma Linda University actually owned within the city, and they still own maybe a hundred or so acres out in our commercial center. So, believe it or not, like where Home Depot was, and where the Walmart is, and where Loma Linda's ambulatory facility is, was all Loma Linda property. And they own where Seneca Springs, where all those houses are, that was Loma Linda property. So they had a development agreement with the city in which they could sell off portions of that property, and the city had some assurances that infrastructure would be built. And it was amended once in 2005 to include that Home Depot specific plan, so the development got amended, they added some stuff from Home Depot. And now they're looking at selling off other parcels. Of note tonight is that seven-acre parcel that we've talked about for a couple of years now that would hold Panera Bread, Sonic Burger, and a pharmacy, and some other different types of uses. So we're pretty much locked in on, on many of the users within that, that commercial development, but Sonic's attorneys are, are very good, and they read every single word, and they found this agreement on title of this property, and they had some concerns with this very large agreement, how it pertained to them, Sonic Burger, he's gonna sell hot dogs and slushies and things like that. So staff reassured them that, that they would be an end user as defined under the agreement, and they asked us to, to take it one step further and partially terminate that agreement with respect to this property and, and their development, which would be that commercial center, once they buy it from, from the person that's gonna acquire it from Loma Linda. So what's before you tonight is a simple partial termination of that development agreement as it relates to that one parcel, which then will go to each of the individual owners. So if Sonic buys the property from, from Rich Development, it'll pass through. Panera buys the property from Rich Development, and so forth. So it really helps them identify funding and close one small issue that they have on the property before they get moving forward. So staff does recommend that city council approve the partial termination development agreement and authorize the mayor to execute that partial termination development agreement, and I can answer any questions. The original development is in there for reading fun, and the partial termination is also attached. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public comments on this?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I would, do we have questions for staff? I'll make a motion to approve the partial termination development agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the partial termination development agreement.
I'll second.
Good.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes. Thank you. I think we need to move back to item eight. I think I neglected to open a public hearing for this. Correct? All right. So with that, I want to make sure that I open the public hearing for item number eight, which is the ordinance to transfer inspection authority to Housing and Community Development, HCD, for the mobile home parks. And I will open the public hearing at six forty-five. And I will close the public hearing at six forty-six. Are we good now? Thank you.
I'll move to approve item number eight, waive the full first reading and approve by substitution of title only.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes. Thank you.
Item eleven, approve the Second Amendment to the purchase order of Clinical Labs of San Bernardino for lab services for wastewater treatment plant in the amount of eighty-five thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
Mayor, council member, this is a contract for testing at our wastewater plant. It's, it's done daily, and there is a report that's generated and submitted to the board. It's a requirement that we need to comply with. This agreement is a Third Amendment, or Second Amendment to the contract that was awarded seven years ago. Recommend awarding it to the same company. They've kept their costs the same. They know the testing procedures, and they've been meeting their, their, their goal of getting the testing done on time. And we do believe that once we get the new plant in oper, a plant in operation, we're going to change the testing, testing procedure. We'll bring some of the testing in-house. So that'll be the time for us to go out and get a new bid for testing labs later on. So we, we hope to keep this company this year and possibly next year until we get the new plant done and constructed. They are familiar with the, with the current plan, and we do not want to bring another company in while we're doing expansion of the plant, renovation of the plant. With that, staff is recommending awarding the contract in the amount of eighty-five thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars to the, to the clinical labs of San Bernardino for lab services for this fiscal year, or for this calendar year.
Thank you.
Concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have public comments?
No speakers.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. So this started in November 2015, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and before that, did this company do any business with Beaumont, as far as you know?
I, I do not know.
Okay. And is, is Utility Partners still running the wastewater treatment plant?
They are still, they are still doing the service, the management of the plant, yes.
Okay.
And, and again, the goal is to change all of these services providers at a point where we're able to now shift to a different operation. Doing that in the middle of all the design work and all the stuff that we're doing, there, there's a potential of the data to be lost. There's a potential for losing operators that have knowledge of the plant. But this clinical lab, this was a project that was put out to bid, and it was based on the, on the normal bidding process. So this is not a professional services contract. It's more of a maintenance contract.
Right, and I'm more concerned, because I read the, the backup on this, and Utility Partners had recommended them. I don't remember, maybe I'm wrong, of us voting on a bid from Utility Partners to run the wastewater treatment plant, and I believe that they've been in place running the plant longer than five years, which I believe is our, our requirement to send, to go back out to bid on a contract that's that long. Do I have my numbers wrong, my dates wrong?
Utility Partners have been running it for, for a long period of time. This, if they might have recommended, they might have gone through the bidding process. When I took over the Public Works Department, at that point, Utility Partners were managing the agreements through their contract, and they were getting different services and repairs done. We've, since that, we've taken over that, that function, and we're doing that now. So we're going through the contracts, and if a contract needs to be put out to bid, we put it out to bid.
Right, and I'm, I'm not opposed to this item here going, I would actually make a motion right now to approve this item. All I'm doing is, this is bringing up thought, and it's, it's- All I'm doing is, this is bringing up thought, and it's, I think it's within my ability to question this during an open council meeting, that we need to review where we are with utility partners, because I believe utility partners, the recent rules that we passed as far as professional services in five years was a required bid, or I think four years was required unless council voted four to one. I got the numbers all mixed up, but I think we should review the utility partners' contract.
Their contract, I believe, is a little over a year old. We did bid the project, we did rebid it, and they were the company that we chose.
We did rebid utility partners?
We did rebid the, yeah.
Okay.
But that's separate, they were there, and then we rebid the whole, the maintenance of the sewer plant was rebid in 2016. And we went through the selection process, and they were selected. And a couple of reasons, one of the reasons, they were, their price was very competitive. The other thing was that they had the knowledge of the plant that we needed to finish the design and get into the new plant. So when we awarded that contract, we did inform council that we will be going out to bid again once the new plant is in place, or bringing some of those functions in-house. And this is in line with the same presentation that we made previously. But no, they're not, their contract is not based on the previous contract, it's based on the new bidding that was done in 2016.
Okay, then I apologize. I got my dates mixed up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your.
That's okay.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
So we did originally bid this out, and they were a successful bidder, and what year was that? I'm sorry?
That was 2015, November of 2015.
We're just asking for another one-year extension?
Yes, and we're keeping some of the main operators until we change operations at the plant, and that's, this is, this is one of the key functions, is to do the reporting and do the testing. And that's the reason for us, and Clinical Lab has done, I mean, I've worked with them in other cities, it's a, they do good work. And we've been satisfied with the work that they've done and the reporting they've provided.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm looking, it looks like April 19, 2016, a RFP was conducted, City Council awarded a contract through that RFP to utility partners.
Okay.
For plant operations. Again, that was April 19, 2016.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Purchase Order with Clinical Labs of San Bernardino for Lab Services of Waste, for Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $85,714.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. I have a question for you. Did I ask if there were public comments on it?
You did.
I thought so. All right. Thank you. Item 12, Award of Construction Contract Agreement to Ortiz Enterprises Incorporated for the State Road 60, Portero Boulevard Interchange Project, Phase 1 and 1A project.
Honorable mayor, councilmember, at the last meeting, we went through the bids that we had received for this project, we went through the funding sources, the grants that were available, and we went through the detail of the private contributions that are made to this project. We finished reviewing all the bid documents for Ortiz Construction, and we're recommending awarding the contract for Phase 1 and 1A to Ortiz in the amount of $13,981,453.50. This bid includes Phase 1, which is the bridge over the State Route 60, and also improvements to the freeway, which is taking out the left turns and taking out some of the, and putting some barricades in the median and adding some auxiliary lint. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have public comments on this?
We do not.
All right, thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Oh, this year, the bid is from Ortiz Enterprise, Inc., right? And I did review the, you know, the contract and everything. I cannot find his, you know, his physical address or anything like that on the contract. Maybe he's not completed, you know, disclosure to us. My second one on the contract is the completion date.
The address is not attached to the contract, but we can add, if you would like, we can add it to the contract, the address of the location. The completion date of this, I believe it's 14 months is what it is. Before they start, we have, it takes about a couple of months to get complete the submittals, order parts and equipments, and then once the construction starts, then they have a certain amount of time to finish.
I think it's important to us, especially on my side, is to see where he's, you know, a professional, you know, background and that, too. I mean, I look on the resume and everything, and I haven't seen his total resume, and then also your subcontractors in there. And I was reviewing the contract on that. I mean, the resume, it doesn't say individually on the, what I have on the online. I just printed it, and I was reviewing it.
So this is, this is a little different than the professional services contract, where we do have the resumes of the people that are going to be working on the project, and we have information on their background. This is a public works contract for construction, and it's limited to what we can ask and what we can use for evaluating the process, based on, it's based on their experience, it's based on their licenses that they have for that type of project, and it's also their lowest bidder. So there are other criterias in here that we don't use, that we use for professional services, so that's why you don't see those items in here. This is, this is, the criteria for how the contracts are awarded are set, in this case, Caltrans oversees setting of that procedures, and we follow their manual and then their guidelines to award the contract. So we can't ask for resumes of the owners or other, but we have looked at their references, we check their references, and they check out. And that's included a part of our review.
Okay, because I did show the carol resume of some of your subcontractor on this attachment. So that's the concern I have on that. Okay, and then I have a, I mean, questions to you on the contract itself, and it says in there that we could audit on the project. And it says in there, it says, you know, auditor general. Who's those auditor general that we could, you know, implement while checking the, every contract we have with them?
The way we audit the contract?
Yeah.
What happens is if the invoices are submitted, and then they submit a work invoice for, let's say, half the work, then we audit their work, we audit their billings to make sure that we're not, the work is only not 40% done, that it is 50% done. Caltrans audits at the end of the project to make sure that all of the submittals are there and they were received. So they, Caltrans audits their own audit. We do audits as we pay the contractor.
Okay.
We audit their books to make sure that they're complying with the wage requirements, or their, all of the other stuff is in place.
Yeah, because it's not on the contract itself.
That is correct, and this is not an audit per se, like the audit is done for the city, it's a different type of audit.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
The dollar amount on this is almost $14 million, and there are a number of people out there who, and we have all new council members, we have all new staff, we have all new department heads, and we are moving forward in a different direction than what we have done before. But because this is $14 million, you're going to have people like Mrs. Kimble, who are going to complain that we're taking more of their money. And so every time this comes up, I need to take that opportunity to remind people, and so you can confirm this for me, is that we originally had sunk in this project, when Mr. Kapanakis and Urban Logic were in control of the city, over $11 million. We paid way too much for the design phase, but the $11 million was sunk into the project and gone. We have, how much do we have federal funding on this project that's available for it?
$13.4 million.
So we have $13.4 million federal funding money that we lose if we don't do this project.
That is correct.
And I bring this up because Mr. Lara and I were on the council, and then Ms. Carroll and Mr. Martinez came on when we, as a council, decided, Mr. Lara and I were definitely against this project, but we decided that we would put out there that the property owners, who tend, who are going to gain the most from this project, would have to come up with the gap. We were not going to put any more city money, we'd already sunk $11 million in it, we're not going to go back to the people and ask for taxes, we weren't going to go back and ask for CFD money. We were putting this all on the developers to come up with the gap. Did they come up with the gap funding?
Developers have come up with the gap.
And how much is their gap funding?
Their gap funding was estimated at 8.5, and one of the developers did not deposit, so we received 8.1 million.
Okay.
Of the 8.5, and that's sufficient to cover the cost of this project.
Okay, I think it's important that we continue every opportunity we can to let the people know that this is a project that is not costing the city anymore, we've paid too much for it upfront, but we do not receive any of the federal funding, and we were willing to, as a council, we were willing to let the federal funding wither away, but we decided that if the property owners wanted to pay the gap, that we would move forward with this project. So I think it's important that every time we bring up a $14 million price tag, that we also remind people that the city has not put anymore after we sunk the money that we, we were already required to, or we, required is not the right word, but you know where I'm going with this.
And also, as part of the WRCO settlement, we were able to take Phase 1 off of it, they did lower the total contribution, that's coming out of dump, to only Phase 2. So that $13 million that we did spend, in a way, went towards the, to the investment that the city had done in lieu of paying dump improvements, or dump fees. So the improvement that we've done overall in the city, this was a part of it that was included in the, in the projects that the city had done.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all done.
Councilmember Martinez?
Good, thank you.
I think that what Councilmember White pointed out was a very good point that we can't say often enough, which is that it was critical to not go into the pockets of the citizens to go ahead and continue this with the money that was already put into it. But I also want to add a detail, which is that it was brought up earlier, that we would be a better balanced city if we had economic development, retail, restaurants, whatever, to support the tax base where we didn't rely too much on our residents and reach into their pockets for extra tax money. And if this project goes forward successfully without reaching into the pockets of our citizens on this point, there will be potential commercial development that will add more diversity to the tax base, that will enable us to do other things for the city and to strengthen the city with tax dollars that are more diverse. And that part of this project will certainly be good, especially if we can do it in a way that is better than the way it was approached in the past. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Other than that.
All in, maintain a motion?
I'll move to award the Construction Contract Agreement to Ortiz Enterprise, Inc., for the SR 60, Portero Boulevard Interchange Project, Phase 1 and 1A project.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 13, Authorize the City Manager to Execute Reimbursable Letter of Agreement with California Highway Patrol Not to Exceed $50,000 to the State Road 60, Portero Boulevard Interchange Phase 1 Project.
Mayor and councilmember, this is a foreign parcel to the earlier item that we had in front of you. This is a routine agreement that CHP does for this type of projects. The services they provide include closure, if there is, there will be a couple of closures at nighttime, there will be other temporary rerouting of the traffic, partial closures. So we'll be calling them to come out, and they come out for a few hours, provide the service, to make sure that everybody's safe. And this charge is now a charge against the project, so it comes out of the federal funds and comes out of the portion that has been collected by the, collected from the developers. With that, recommending approval of this agreement not to exceed $50,000 with CHP.
Thank you. Public comment?
No speakers.
Thank you.
I move to approve item number 13, authorize the city manager to execute reimbursable letter of agreement with California Highway Patrol not to exceed $50,000 for the SR 60, Portero Boulevard Interchange.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Item 14, Request City Council to Approve the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Beaumont and Managers, Professional, Technical as Individuals.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you. What you have before you is a brief staff report that kind of explains the differences. I just tried to itemize it in order throughout the memorandum of understanding and the things that were changed. I met with the two groups, they were once two groups, we were dwindling in membership, so approached, and the members were in agreement to consolidate the two groups. So this will become our managers and professional technicals individuals. We discussed a cost of living increase effective January 1, 2018. We removed some city vehicle language because none of the positions that are left in this MOU qualify for 24-hour and take-home vehicles. A uniform maintenance reimbursement plan was removed, a cell phone increase, monthly allotment was increased, excuse me, and those are only subject to city manager approval and 24-hour callback positions. Employees will pick up the final 2% of their employer, employee portion of their PERS retirement if they're classic members. They agree to a $1,500 cap in the cafeteria plan as described in the MOU. They also agreed to hard caps in sick vacation, or as requested by council. For consistency purposes, we matched some other language in bilingual pay for ease of finance and payroll, if you will. We are reinstituting and bringing back the wellness program, we do see benefits from that, and increasing the holidays back. Net all, give and take, I have a nice little spreadsheet that I submitted to the city manager that kind of has the breakdown of what we added and what we took away, so the net cost to the city ended up being about $28,000, $28.5 annually, which the budget can sustain this fiscal year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, excuse me, I did have one substantive change from the version you have in front of you. Legal just returned it to me this afternoon, taking out section, Article 3, now only refers to the nondiscrimination and harassment clause. They actually took all the language out, we're going to put all of that language in the employee handbook, not leave it in the MOU per se, we're going to put it in the handbook. So that actually shortens the document a little bit, so I do have that change to the MOU compared to the one you have in front of you. And other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have public comments?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Questions from council of staff?
I have one.
Councilmember White?
This $28,000 is split over, how many employees are we talking about?
We're only talking about 20 employees total in this group. There's 14 positions that are directly identified in the MOU, and then there's directors or executive employment contracts that are out there that by per statute and law, you kind of have to point to a base benefit package, if you will. So those, some of those executive contracts point to this contract as their base, so they would also get the $1,500 and things like that.
Okay, and just, I think it said with the budget increase was $28,000, is that right?
Correct.
Over 20 employees?
Correct.
Just summarize the con- Just summarize the kind of employees we're talking about here so that people are aware.
Absolutely.
You don't need to go through each individual position, but just, are we talking about police? Are we talking about?
No, we're talking about, I call them, PERS calls them miscellaneous. So we're talking about our building official, our deputy city clerk, our PIO, our building maintenance supervisor, our street supervisor, transit vehicle maintenance supervisor, those mid-level managers are some of them.
Thank you.
I think that's a good job, Karen. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thanks to the staff as well.
I have a very simple question. On the, where you changed the bilingual play to one fifty per hour, and that was to make it consistent. So it's whether they use it or not, but it's just for consistency.
It was for consistency, just to clean up the language, and out of the twenty individuals that are currently in here, nobody receives that benefit right now. There is a fluency exam that they can apply to take. If the city manager deems it appropriate and they pass at a sufficient level, they would be qualified for it. But again, it's with his approval.
So do they get the increase if they don't take the exam, or they have to take the exam?
No, they have to take the exam and, yeah, have to take the exam, pass the exam.
All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Beaumont and managers professional, technical as individuals.
With the removal as presented?
Yes.
Of Article Three, yes. Thank you.
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes. Item fifteen, acceptance of City of Beaumont internal control letter and management responses for the fiscal year of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Excuse me, mayor, are we going to be having a demo here?
Absolutely.
Could I request a?
You want a break?
Sure, break. Yes, please.
Sure. All right. Thank you. Hold that thought.
Item fifteen, go for it, Ma.
Go for it? Okay. Well, Happy New Year, mayor and council. And I am here tonight because at last meeting, we were going through the internal control report, and I was asked to present information and perhaps a demonstration of our software and how it actually resolves some of the issues that we have with our internal controls the way that the systems were set up previously. So I did prepare you a staff report to take a look at some of the different internal control problems the city has had and what we've done to address them. And for the internal control letter, of all the points that are there, there are only four that are specifically going to be addressed by the software itself. So I am going to be logging onto that computer right there so we can all see it on the screen, and I can try and answer questions you have for that. Before I do that, is there anything specific that you're interested in that you would want me to pull up from the software so that you can see it? That's my only question. Not yet? Well, then, as I go along, you can stop me.
I do have a question. When you go through, are you going to, like, mention when items address what's in the state controller's report and make any kind of correlation? Because I'd appreciate that if you could.
That would probably be helpful. Sure.
All right. Thank you.
I could do that. Okay, let me get it set up. We did test this earlier, and it was working fine. Just know what to knock on.
That's a legal waiver.
See if this works.
Worked okay.
Come in. You know, technical stuff totally messed up.
Software for the software.
Where is there it is? There's also no mouse, which is driving me crazy, just so you know. Okay. All right. So every user is set up individually in this software. Each individual is given a, their own login. And you can see these are all the people that have access to the software. It's a total list. And within that, each person is given a role, which is another name. Each role, then, is where the access permissions are set, is in the role, not with the individual, so that you can move an individual to a different role or remove them entirely if they're no longer with the city. So we have all of these security roles set up in each individual setup. Everyone has their own user ID and password. The password for the software to get from the computer to the hosted server, because it's hosted by our vendor, they set up that password. We don't have access to that, so that's our first control. And then, secondly, they set up their own password then when they have access on their side. So it's got two different passwords, one that our vendor sets up that runs in the background, and then the one that the individual user sets up. Okay? So the things that we have specifically, the policies and procedures for fraud prevention and detection. What I've got in place currently, there he is, okay, is anything that is entered by anyone has to be reviewed and approved by another person. So nothing can be posted without a second person looking at it. And it has to be a second person who has the rights and permissions to do that. So when we look at, they call them batches or packets, I'm used to batches. These are all packets that are open right now and not posted, just so you can see them. So we know who created them, and we can see what they are. These are mostly journal entries for adjustments and things that need to be made. We have some that are the fun ones. We have these. There are a bazillion of these, it seems like, but we're getting through the process now. This is from the cashiering system. They're automatically pulling over into a packet where we can review each transaction, determine whether or not it's right, if it's coded right, any of that, and then we can post it to the general ledger. So nothing goes automatic. Cash receiving is done, of course, by the coordinators that are at the window. So it's not the finance staff that does those entries. We're not taking cash at the counter from the customers. We're not doing that side of it. So what they've done at night, while we're all sleeping, the computer then pulls all that data, puts it into these packets so that we can review them and post them the next day. Some of these that are in here are, you'll see they say utility billing. They have to do with utility billing issues, finance charges or credits that are issued, things like that for the individual utility bills. Those we are working with now because the system has never automatically tied to the accounts receivable module, ever. They've always been standalone. So now, we're just starting to test those. We're going to start looking at how that comes across so that we can integrate the accounts receivable directly into the general ledger. So that's one of the reasons why there's so many of these packets right now. We're actually working on that testing. So there's a bunch of those that have not been approved. But to go back, go to some of these, oh, where are mine? Okay, those are not me. Ah, there we go. So I have journal entries that I have been doing. So if I put in, say, this one, you can see when you do the input, these are for wire transfers that I'm making when individuals have made their CFD prepayment, they're paying off their CFDs based on the quotes they got from web through the process. We do a wire transfer to the trustee. I have my journal entry. The journal number automatically is assigned. I can't change it. I could try. It will get very angry with me. So I don't want to get my batch stuck, so I won't do that. I have all my entries that go with it, and then I can attach the documents that then support that journal entry. If it want, oh, that's right, this one doesn't have it yet. That's why I hadn't posted it. But this one does. So we have all of the documentation to support journal entry. So everything that goes with that entry is there. So if I were to save and close, and then I do the journal entry review, you have the opportunity to make sure that your journal entries are entered right. I'm going to do save and close. I can then run the register. So there it is. Let's run the report. It'll be lovely. It'll tell me everything I entered. This is where I can check to make sure I have the date of the transaction entered properly, that I have the description proper, I have the right account numbers, and it did all the things it was supposed to do and makes me happy. And then it has a summary on the next page so I can make sure my transfers worked properly. And then approval. Now, one of the things that we're working on is if I enter it, I'm not supposed to be able to approve it. And it's set that way, that I'm not allowed to approve it. But I think because at the moment, I'm the system administrator while we're waiting to get our IT manager in-house, it allows me to do it. So being as conscientious as I can, I'm not approving my entries. I am making sure that someone else does it. So when I look at someone else's, doo-doo, there we go. If I look at this one, for example, you can see I have the, I can do the approval. I can just pull it up and see what she's done, what staff person has entered, and see if the entry looks right, if the debits and the credits are the right direction. I can do all of that. Or I can go back to the actual journal entry, and I can see the support that she's attached to it to make sure that that's the correct entry to be made, to make sure that she didn't miss anything. And you can see in this case, we have some reversals, and we have to make some adjustments and corrections. So I'll go back through the details, make sure that those are being applied properly before it gets posted. So I won't do that. Don't want to approve it at the moment. But that's how all of those things work, reclassifications. And you can see that on a daily basis, I have a lot that I need to go through and make sure is right. So I have the oversight for that function. The cash receipts that are coming from the clerks at the front, I've given the authority for posting, approving and posting those to our, one of our staff in order to do that, who's every day looking at those and making sure that they're right. That person also is the one that's logging the sealed cash deposits for the armored truck pickup, so she can make sure that those numbers are matching, and she can get those posted. So those will be done as well. So that's how I, we're doing the detection. We're every, there isn't anything that can be done that doesn't require somebody to approve it. And that includes bank reconciliations. Everything that is done in the system has to go through an approval process. The segregation of duties for the cash receipts, I've already talked about that as well, how it's coming across now. Different, the person who's doing the entries is not the person who's taking the cash. We're just making sure the totals match, and then we go through to make sure the information either appears accurate or if something is really odd, we'll go back and we'll pull documentation that supports it. Always, anything that goes to miscellaneous income makes the staff go, hmm, maybe not. Let me see what that is. Maybe it doesn't go there. If there's a fund number that's not normally used for things, we'll stop and we'll make sure that that transaction's accurate as well. But we have the ability now to stop and have a review process for all entries. And that's how we're doing this, including payroll entry, every, every entry into the general ledger, every reconciliation process that's done has oversight by another person. The segregation of duties for business licenses and the segregation of duties for building permits, those are both being addressed with the Intergov side of the software, which we are working on now and hoping to go live with this month. And once that happens, then they'll also be integrated. They won't be separate programs. What's happened in the past is the general ledger picks up the amounts that are going into the bank, but permits or licenses are being issued out of the software over here and never have the two been reconciled against each other. With this integrated software solution, when you do it in one, it comes over to the other, and all of the numbers are assigned by the system, and we can run audit trail reports to make sure nothing's been skipped. We can run adjustment entries to make sure that nobody's adjusted off anything. And we'll know if a building permit was issued, that it's come across, and we can see it's been accounted for and paid. Like those last two, the business license and building permits, those are, right now, happening as we speak. And they should hopefully be running smooth. Actually, we're hoping by the, you know, some of them next week, but overall, we're hoping to do all of the data transfer and get it up and running before the end of January. So that's kind of the overview.
Has data transfers started to occur, or that's getting ready to start?
The data transfer, they're picking up, I believe it's, maybe it's all history from the old systems, standalone systems, and they're going to be pulling it into this system so that we have the historical information there. And then we'll be able to build going forward on that, rather than starting with a clean slate of all nothing and just building forward. So that's what we're working towards so that we can do that, that, you know, stop using the system, data transfer. Now you can use the new system, so.
On the data transfer, you're talking about data transfer into the Intergov software, correct?
Right, from our existing outside softwares.
The county is having the pleasure of going through that whole data transfer issue and, or data transfer. And one of the things that we had to do, and I'm just curious to see if you have to do that, is every item that's been brought over has to be touched or updated in Intergov in order to, for it to operate or in order to work on that, say it's an invoice, I'm using the wrong terminology, but you have to update that invoice in order for it to be functional in Intergov.
Well, because the city wasn't using a software that was generating invoices, we don't have anything that's going to be hung up in a half process. It was either done or it wasn't done. The history that seems to be critical right now is public works projects. When people have a certain, something that they're doing, and they're part of the way through the process, and they've done this check and that check, and now it's sitting in, we don't want to lose that history. But it doesn't have any effect on invoicing. Any invoices are going to be created fresh and new in Intergov. And we've been using that now for building permits and for building inspections, and that seems to be working really well. We're integrating the developer impact fees now, and we're going to then start using the whole issuing of the permits and doing the whole integration by the end of the month. So we were trying to do a little bit here and there, see how it works. One of the concerns we have right now, and we're working through them on the technical side, is requiring deposits by people to make sure that that amount that's held in escrow, if you will, gets accounted for properly so that we make sure that we're tracking those monies and we know when they owe us more, or if they've overpaid and we need to refund the balance. So that's really kind of the technical piece that we're still working on and make sure that's going to work the way that we need it to. But we're, I think we're right about there for that data transfer so that we can start using the Intergov system consistently.
So you talked about the data transfer in public works.
Mm-hmm.
You said there we may be losing some of the information, but none of the financial.
No, we're trying not to lose any of the information. We want to pull everything over and make sure that we have that consistent information going forward. So once the data transfer occurs, then we have to, the directors or their analyst staff are going to have to go through. And if not, I don't think it's possible to check every single thing, but they're going to have to do spot checks of certain projects or certain things that they know are critical, make sure that all the data is still there, it didn't get lost, corrupted, changed. And so that's, once they do that, that migration of information, then yes, we're going to have to take a little time to make sure that it all came over and it came over correctly. Doing the general ledger was a lot easier than doing some of the public works or the planning items because with the general ledger, you make sure that the numbers are all still balanced, that they're all in the right funds, and it's more of a self-tracking because it's got a self-balance. When it comes to these projects, it doesn't work that way. So we have to be really careful how we go through that and make sure that that information is valid so that we can start moving forward.
Will the software that we're pulling the data over from, will that still be available, like, in a read-only format?
I don't know for sure. Yes, we will have access to, it's, I call it basic gov, and everybody else calls it something else, but I think it is basic gov. That will still be there so that we have that reference. And if something happens and the data can't transfer And if something happens and the data can't transfer over without a glitch or a problem, we'll make sure that we have something available. We did that with the former accounting software as well. We have a minimum number of users. We have that information so we can go back and pull historical information if we need it.
Because that's always a question out there, so I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yes.
I do. First of all, passwords, are they updated on a regular basis?
The passwords into the software, you get a message every six months that you have to update it.
Okay. And is there access off-site to anyone for this?
It's web-based and it's hosted by our vendor in Texas. So as long as you have the software with the mandated passwords that the vendor has set up on their site, you do have access off-site.
Okay. And going forward, is there a need for hard copy backups of something like the journal entry register? Do you do hard copy backups at all?
No.
Okay.
No.
And you mentioned that the idea that someone else approves the different entries, is that record then marked with who approved it as well?
Yes.
And you mentioned bank reconciliation. I don't know where we were when you came in, but we were months behind, half a year behind, I think, at one point.
I think it was more than that.
Was it?
It wasn't pretty. Currently, every bank account that the city has is reconciled on a monthly basis. We'll be pulling this week, I just didn't have time this morning, pulling the December bank statements so that they can be reconciled by staff. The pooled cash, the big account, the general account, that one is reconciled weekly. It's much easier to do that one on a weekly basis. And that one, let's see, I saw it. Nope, that's the payroll account, we have to finish that one. Oh, I don't see it. Oh, Carrie was doing that one. There she is. So let's see. Bank reconciliation. For our general account, she is working on the bank reconciliation from 12-1 to 12-6. So...
Okay.
We're about a month out, but that's pretty common, so not bad.
Yeah, I heard you guys mention Salesforce before. Is Salesforce being used in...
Salesforce, Basic Gov, same thing.
Okay.
I knew there was another name and they get used interchangeably, so yes.
So Salesforce is that integrated with this? So in other words, as a CRM, Salesforce can keep track of who your vendors and customers are, right?
Right, and so that's the data migration that's gonna come into Intergov. Intergov then is gonna automatically integrate with the accounting software.
Okay.
So that's what that is. And the business licenses is currently with an HDL software product. And so that's also gonna be pulled over into Intergov and managed as an integrated software as well.
And with this software, you... Do you have the ability to check to see where a department is on their budget?
Absolutely.
Can we check Bob's budget, please?
We can check. You okay with that, Bob?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you too, we can do yours too. Okay. So what I have is the account summary. And we can do this a couple of different ways, but let's look at...
So I mean, if Bob came to you and said, "I need to spend X amount of dollars, where's it fit in my budget?"
Well, first, he has access, so he really should look.
Okay.
He's supposed to. But off the top of my head, I am not doing well. Your department is not 1050, not 1200... 1350? Do 60? Okay, I can do that one, okay. See, that was... I was like 15, no, that's not right. Okay, so 60-50 is parks and grounds and maintenance. So we can look right here. Of course, you want to be that way, don't you? I am looking for the department number, so that's the second digit, second set of digits. So that is the department. So this... You want to see where you stand, huh? And you can see that his... Let's find something that's easier to look at than personnel. Personnel's just hard to look at. But all I have to do is pull up this screen. Okay, so we'll look at telephone costs. He had a budget of 5,050. And he's only spent $137, so he has 4,900 left. Which is actually not quite right, because there's a couple other little line items down there. Because we're starting to break the parks and recreation and maintenance. As you can see, we are working on breaking them down by the specific areas. And right now, we're dealing with the parks. Yeah! So, yeah, deal, we gave him 40,000 and he's used 21,000. Well, we're at December, right, six months. Just right, right? So that's... So one of the things we're gonna be doing for council is doing a really... An in-depth review of that six-month set of numbers. But every director has access to their department's numbers. And I've got it so that Bob has access to parks, but he doesn't have access to police department. But that's okay, because police department has police and fire and support service for them, for public safety. But they don't have access to parks and rec.
Okay.
So I've set it up in a way that it makes sense. The individuals who have access to all accounts, all funds are all finance staff, city manager, assistant city manager, deputy city clerk, and the administrative director. Those positions have access to everything.
And council members have no access to anything, correct?
You don't, but you know, if you wanted... Okay.
Just for the record.
Just for the record, no, you do not.
And one last question. What are you gonna come to us for next? What do you need next? What piece is the most important piece that you don't have right now?
People. I need people. I have great software with all kinds of capabilities, fantastic things, but I don't have a way to manage them because there's not enough hours in a day.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate the demo ability.
Sure.
Yeah, I did. One of the things that we liked about the software, because you had mentioned that you have multiple people that have access to all areas. But if any of those people make a change, there's... They leave a fingerprint or a thumbprint on any change that's made within the system. So you... Even though they have access to it, you can still go back and see, well, why was so-and-so in there? Why did they touch that?
Right, I do. There's an audit feature where you can go in and you can see who did something. So if something looks different and it's not how I remembered it being, I can go back and see if somebody messed with it or if somebody went in thinking it was something else and made a change. The other person who has full access is a treasurer, I forgot to mention. She does have access to the software as well, so...
The other thing I wanted to make a comment on is we talked about Bob having access to his budget. This was something that wasn't done four, five years ago.
Correct, there was no access for anyone else. The previous software had exactly four user licenses. There could only be four people in it. It was a standalone software and it was only on a limited number of computers. So if somebody wanted to know where they stood, they would have to go to the director of finance, who would then have to generate a report and let them know, or just tell them no, either way.
Thank you very much.
Well, and the reports were so limited.
Very limited, they weren't set up to their full potential and it was very difficult to get useful information, yes.
So even though you could see that there were all these options for reports, we didn't even have that functioning module, so you couldn't even run them.
Right, right. Not... Probably less than 30% of the reports were actually set up.
Councilmember Santos?
Yeah, regarding on the journal entry. Lloyd already asked these questions. Who, you know, who's the other person authorized to, you know, check your journal entry? My second question on that is the who originate, except you, on the journal?
Oh, journal entries. The finance staff, the four... Yep, the four of... Had to count. The four of us all have the ability to enter a journal entry. And any of the four of us can approve an entry for the other one. But I also then go through, the end of the month, we have a checklist that staff goes through where I make sure that they've reconciled those items that they're responsible for. And then I can go back through and make sure that everything makes sense and that nothing's gone awry. There are certain things, though, that only I have access to approve or the senior staff. And that is in the accounts payable function, when they go through and all the invoices are reviewed, in order to print the checks. That can only be approved by myself, the director of administration, or the senior accounting staff member. And that's it.
Thank you.
So my first question went along with Mr. Santos. So technically, there's like a third check on some of these entries, really. There's a first, a second, and a third.
Right, we have multiple levels. Depending on what that function is, that we have extra levels of review and approvals.
Now, you were talking about as they're... Before they're posted, of course, they're in what we call a packet. All right, now, you said there's a little bit more packets than usual right now because they're in a testing phase. So does that create any type of backlog with the personnel since they have to go through all those and then interim?
No, they're already there. One of the things we're doing is we're working with the receivable numbers. We're trying to make sure that it's gonna work. So what we're doing right now is we have all these packets there, but we're not posting them. We're letting them sit. We know what the balance of the receivables were as of the first of January. We have these packets, we know what billing is, we know what the cash receipts are. Then we have these packets for other things that occur, which we're not going to post until we have the beginning to the ending. We know what transactions are already through. And then we're gonna go through and see what that does to the receivable balance. And then either we post them or we delete them.
Now, my last question has to go on terms of transparency. And I'm not the most savvy when it comes to electronics. So let me know, how is Laserfish coming to part of this? I mean, once you post stuff, is it gonna be able to go over to the public so that they can view these general ledgers and so forth?
No, we don't have Laserfish integrated with this software. There were a couple of concerns. My first thought was, I wish it did. But then there's other things where redaction is so important that I don't want it to be automatic. So, and the other thing then becomes, well, what are we scanning and what are we not scanning? And do we scan it once or do we have it in two places? You know, what do we do? So we've had to make some judgment calls. When it comes to journal entry support, it's staying attached to the journal entries within the general ledger. When we do accounts payable and invoices from our vendors, we're not attaching it in the software, we're putting them in Laserfish so that then that has public access because people want to see those invoices. So rather than do that twice, you know, we kind of did pick and choose which one makes the most sense and then we'll just follow that call. And having it in Laserfish is just as easy in some ways for the finance staff to go and find an invoice that they're looking for. We have the history, we know the transaction date and the invoice number and all that. So then we can go over to the scan files and generally, we can find what we're looking for.
So if someone requested an old-fashioned public records request on a ledger or something, we might still have to do redaction or something?
Oh, yes. We do have redaction issues. There are two funds that are not available to the public. One is our risk and insurance fund because we have, you know, sensitive information with litigation and those kinds of things. So that one is not available to the public. But the activity is posted at the end of each month in bulk, where I've got all the details. Then we take it out in bulk and we put it in a general fund. So that financial impact is in a fund that is available to the public. The other fund that's not available to the public is the evidence fund because we have case numbers and people's names and that kind of thing. So that one is not available to the public. But that is just cash that's held in trust. So it just sits until, you know, cases are resolved or whatever else comes up. So those are the two funds that aren't available to the public at all. But then we also have some sensitive information in the general ledger that we do have to go through and make sure that we're not letting something be out there that doesn't belong. And I found one account that I have to be sure is redacted and we just have to be diligent on our side. You know, we don't want to impact somebody in a way that's negative for them.
Right, thank you.
Do we have any public comments? And before I ask that, I want to... We have two members of our finance and audit committee here tonight. Well, actually, more than two, because we have other members here. I would like to encourage them. If you have comments, you're welcome to do them in the form of questions. And now would be the time to get them asked or addressed. And you're such a great addition to the finance and audit committee. I'd love to see you take advantage if you have any questions or comments you'd like to make about it. So if so, we can just let you come to the microphone and then we can take your names afterwards and make sure you're recorded officially.
And we can also go through anything. Now that we have this available on this computer, now at the finance and audit committee, we can also pull up information or data as we need at that point in time. And I can go through the same kind of presentation with the committee so that they have a better understanding as well when we talk about the SEO and their internal control findings.
Questions?
I think it's been very clearly explained. I agree with you.
You're good? Okay, thank you, thank you for coming to your attention, appreciate it. You mentioned in the finance and audit committee that there were a couple of problems that you were still hoping that the vendor would catch up with and give you support on. Could you tell me what they are and how they relate to this?
Well, we were hung. We were hung up on a few issues with the software where we weren't getting the proper attention. And getting kind of handed off here and there and here and there. And we put our foot down and said, "You will do this." On one side, they were told, "You do this by this date or we're canceling your contract." On another piece that I was having trouble with, I contacted them and said, "If somebody doesn't get back in touch with me immediately, I want a full refund." Amazingly, both of us got the responses that we needed. And that's why we are to the point we are right now where it looks like by the end of January, we may have most of this resolved, so...
Excellent.
Question, I just noticed, I wrote down. So Malana, you said this covers four out of those 15 findings. So on those 11 non-software-related findings on the report, do you believe you have everything that you'll need to be compliant for the next audit or...
Yes, a few may still like fall over because of just timing of resolution of different things. But we have been working hard to address every single issue and make sure that we can remove as many of those items in the next subsequent audit period as we possibly can. And so, you know, we're still gonna have some fall over just because of timing, but we have really been working hard at it. So I think we are right, we're right there now.
Good, okay, thank you.
And I will make a comment on that in terms of timing. The, you know, it's one thing to look at when the findings were put out there and then to say, there's this long period of time since those findings and why haven't they all been fixed? But in working with you and working with finance and audit, so many of those findings required such a long period of time to choose software, to figure out integration methods, to make sure that the checks... I mean, so much work had to be done that the timeline was so long. So when it does happen, it seems like it starts to fall in place pretty rapidly. But the lag in between being able to go from the findings to getting the software properly installed and checked and verified that everything is all right and get people trained and fully set up, that requires a long time.
It does. It does because you don't want to make any snap judgments. This'll fix it, no, you need to think about that. Is that really gonna solve the problem or is that just gonna create a new one that we haven't thought of? So try to take some time, think about what the best method would be, the best way to get things handled in order to take all of the different impacts into consideration and do the right thing the first time.
And how will this help you now, working with the auditors going forward?
Think just, what do you want? There you go. And it's much cleaner. Everything is set up, so much easier to follow from an accounting standpoint. And, you know, any kind of documentation they want, we now have most of it at our fingertips at any point in time. So they ask for it, we can do that. If they want to report in a certain way, there's a bazillion ways to report. The reporting menu, Sharon and I both are like, wow, just for the general ledger, here are all of the canned reports that they have available. So if one of those doesn't work, I'm gonna be totally surprised. But there's also some flexibility to do your own reporting if you need to do something... customized. But there's, there's just a ton of things and so much power with the software. We have the project accounting in here now. We have the purchase order accounting that's in here now. Everything is tied together. There's budgets on everything, and you can, you can put all kinds of bells and whistles in it. I've got the, the hard cap on CIP projects that are set up, so that if something starts to go over one of our budgets on a project, if they try to put in a purchase order that exceeds that, it won't let them. And they come to me and say, "Why won't this work?" And then I look at them and say, "'Because you want to spend too much.'" So, you know, there, there are all kinds of capabilities with this software. We just need to be able to use all of it to its fullest potential.
Excellent. We accept... This is...
Mayor, I'd like to move to accept the City of Beaumont Internal Control Letter as presented for the fiscal year June 30, 2016.
Second.
Councilmember Santos? Yes. Councilmember White? Yes. Councilmember Lara? Yes. Mayor Fortem Martinez? Yes. Mayor Carroll? Yes.
Legislative updates and discussion?
What? No. Oh, yes, you didn't have to do that. Sorry.
Mayor, I have a comment on this item.
Do we have a staff report or discussion on this? Okay. Okay. Then, go ahead.
So, I have this agenda item nine from RCTC, the last agenda, and I, I bring this to, to you, Mr. Pardon, as sort of a, a guide on, on something that we can do. First section of it talks about updates, legislative updates, and then the last part, I think it would be useful for us to start get, getting this in a position to start thinking about these things, is their state and federal legislative platform. In other words, what has RCTC decided is important to them over the next year legislatively? And then, once you have that, that list or that guideline in place, then you can start making decisions, budget decisions on, you know, where are we going to approach, and how are we going to get what the City of Beaumont needs as far as legislative support from our elected leaders. So, I just wanted to bring that here for you. And other than that, really don't have any other legal legislative discussion, but as I said, as, as you have a budget for money, it would be nice to put together a, a plan, a legislative plan for us to consider. Thank you.
Council report. I have no report this time. Councilmember Santos?
No, I don't have any report, but I will, you know, I work out with Nicole, and I was, I'm scheduled right now to attend the new council, what's that?
It's the new council, a new mayor academy that's put on by the League of Cities.
Yeah, that'll be next week. I'll be attending that, going to Sacramento on that, so for public record on that. And I don't know if I need to, but I will share it with you. You know, prior Christmas, I had a call on, with Chad Mace, and he's an assembly person, and he, he met with me on, on the Starbucks in, in Banning, and I talked to him about the, you know, he likes to, to meet with me, understand me, and he got several questions, my background and everything. And I didn't call anybody, I mean, am I on the brown act thing or something? I mean, you know? So, I asked him about that, and he said that, you know, he's happy about our, our council, and he's really looking forward on, on what we're doing. And he's so positive about the council on the, on the City of Beaumont, and he congratulate us on that, on that side. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Lara?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez?
No report. Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. City treasurer report?
Nothing to report.
City clerk?
Okay, I have a little something, but it'll be quick. So, we have final numbers for public records requests from September, October, November, and number of requests in September were 87. They've all been responded to, for a total of 16.5 staff hours. October, we had seven requests, and they've all been responded to, 10 hours of staff time. And November, 17 request, all responded to, and 14.5 staff hours.
Thank you. City attorney report?
I have the city attorney report. It doesn't appear to have changed from the last meeting, so...
Mr. Patterson?
Your discretion.
It's fine.
I don't think it's on.
That's fine.
Do you want me to go ahead and go over it, or do you want to forego that?
It's the same as pretty much the last meeting.
It appears that it hasn't changed, yes.
Then, I think we're fine.
Okay, thank you.
Same manager report?
What he's been waiting for.
Yep.
Okay. So, Vincent, sure what's going on?
Okay, so, at our last council meeting, I guess of December, we discussed general plan options. Council had asked us to consider scheduling a workshop for that. So, just want to get a quick consensus from council. Would propose really, probably to do a workshop on the general plan update on the February 6th regular city council evening, so we could do a workshop, say, at 5:00 PM, before your regular council meeting. And we'll try to make sure that we have our closed session items that are taken care of, you know, either the meeting before or the meeting after. So, we try to keep as clear as we can, plan to do that. So, it's an important date for us, where we've got notices going out to those folks that are included in those areas of change, and so we'll be advising them of the planned workshop in addition to, we've got information going out to them requesting input, either mail back or input that they can provide via online survey of their information. So, just consensus, are y'all good for 5:00 preceding the regular city council meeting of February the 6th? Does that sound good? Okay.
Then I apologize. Zemi will be starting closed session earlier?
We're going to try to keep closed session items cleared on that issue. If they are, we may try to schedule them towards the end of the meeting instead.
Just that short, and we should be...
One correction, a little embarrassed, but Utility Partners, our last management agreement with them for the wastewater plant was actually approved on May 7, 2017. So, we actually have a utilities partner contract that was there. We went through an RFP process that was really authorized by council in May of 2016. We went through that RFP process. I, I'd gone back to look at the historical record of that. We had three bidders, of which Utility Partners was the lowest responsible bidder, and council awarded that. So, anyway, so apologize, I misstated the actual execution of that contract that was there. Bradley is the independent counsel that we hired to look at the SEC matters. They're reviewing our cash handling and cash policies as it pertains to bond dollars. They have done a significant amount of work to review our policies. We are scheduled to have a staff consultation with them this week. So, you know, we're making pretty good progress with regard to that effort that was out there. And finally, I, I must admit, I've done a lot of research into the coast range new, they are not funny. It's not a funny animal. So, I apologize, Councilwoman Martinez, Mayor Fortem.
Still trying to revive that new.
Yeah, it just, the new doesn't work.
Can't do much with the...
You can't do much with the new.
How about, how about Broncos? Are they funny this year?
They're pretty hilarious. Quite hilarious. It's amazing what you can do without an offense. How are those Chargers?
They beat the Raiders. They swept the Raiders. But that's not saying much, so...
Is that even necessary? I'm minding my own business, I'm sitting here, minding my own business.
They finished eight and three, I believe.
How did UCLA do in their bowl game? North Texas lost 50 to 30.
It's basketball season, I don't play football at this point. We did beat Kentucky, though.
I saw that. Patriots are good. Okay, that, that concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you. Future agenda items? Any suggestions for future agenda? Okay. Well, thank you, and welcome this day, and we look forward to working with you and getting your support going forward. With that, I will adjourn. The city council meeting on the 2nd of January at 8:10.